Can you read the statement of certification of meeting?
Yes, our certification of meeting has been sabotaged according to sunshine law.
Please call roll.
Mr. Venira.
Here.
Mr. Zungri.
Here.
Mrs. Inorgerada.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Conti. Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mrs. Shore.
Here.
Mr. Matticini. Mr. Cogiello.
Here.
Mr. Anella.
Here.
Mr. Decorpus. Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mrs. Tevito.
Here.
Mr. Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Can I have an emotion for the approval of the minutes of the July ninth, two thousand and fifteen meeting?
Move it.
Close call roll.
Mr. Venira.
Yes.
Mr. Zungri.
Yes.
Mrs. Inorgerada.
Yes.
Mr. Con, uh, Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shore.
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Cogiello.
Yes.
Mr. Anella.
Yes.
Uh, correspondence and payments of bills, any more questions?
Just in regard to correspondence. I can help this group on future.
Close?
Yes, I am.
Tell me something.
No.
Close, make a note of that?
No, yes.
Uh, is there anything on the old business anyone like to bring up?
I have, oh, it could be really controlled though. Um, I have a question for Franklin, um, by the balderdash on Franklin with the property of the laundromat.
Yes.
It was supposed to be a solid separation of property between the bank and the laundromat. And now someone opened it up again.
Hard rail?
Yeah.
Was it a condition? You're saying it was a condition?
I believe it was.
Oh, that's a check. When the last one came through on the largest estate.
I've noticed now the overflow is back into the bank lot because they can walk right through.
Okay, I'll check and see if it was a condition. That was the last one we had a couple of years ago, uh, when the largest member that came here. I'll check.
We have no resolutions. New business? If not, the application before the board is PB two thousand and fifteen dash oh five, three eighty-eight Main Street for Little Caesar's Pizza. Mr. Cassillon, you ready?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council's name is Robert Cassillon, the firm is Cassillon Palaco, five twenty-four Union Avenue in Belleville. I represent the applicant in this matter, Chaz Khan. My client is seeking site plan and conditional use approval for a Little Caesar's Pizza carryout eating establishment. Carryout restaurants are conditionally permitted uses in the zone we are in, which is the BF zone. Obviously, everybody is familiar with the fact that this is a shopping center. The witnesses you'll hear from this evening are Chaz Khan, the applicant, and Joe Steiger, who is an engineer and planner. Mr. Khan will discuss what it is he is looking to have approved and review the proposed business operation of a Little Caesar's. Mr. Steiger will discuss the site and the parking. He will also review compliance with the conditions and comments on the letters of Mr. Di Lorenzo and Mr. Harris. At the conclusion, I think, will be clear that the application is complementary as a usage in this business area and helps with the current uses in the shopping center, and that it will be clear that the application should be approved. Mr. Khan.
Sir, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and state your address for the record.
Uh, Chaz Khan, K H A N, two ML Street, Princeton Junction, New Jersey, zero eight five five zero.
Please spell M.
E M R L.
Thank you.
Mr. Khan, what is your business address?
It, well, the main address is the two ML Street, Princeton Junction, New Jersey.
And generally describe what your operation is.
I'm a franchisee at the Little Caesar's Pizza.
And what is it you're seeking approval to do before this board this evening?
Looking to build at three eighty-eight Main Street in Belleville.
And what is the approximate square footage of the existing area that you will be leasing should this application be approved?
It is fourteen hundred square meters.
And briefly, the terms of that lease, I don't mean dollars, it says the years.
It's a ten-year plus two-five-year rentals.
And as a Little Caesar's franchise operator, prior to negotiating to lease this property, did you do any investigation to determine that you think this will work?
We did a, we looked at demographics, we looked at population density for the area, uh, amount of children per household, uh, household composition, uh, to see if, you know, comparing it to other markets, and felt Belleville had that right family composition of, uh, mother, father, their parents and kids, um, to which is a part of a Little Caesar's.
Did you also look to see if you thought the parking was adequate?
It was a concern because we had heard that Planet Fitness was coming in, uh, but so we looked at it, and, uh, our parking situation is inversely proportionate to their parking situation, so it's, their busier times are, you know, maybe at the beginning of the week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, that's after the weekend, people feel guilty and they want to go and work out. Our busier times are Friday, Saturday, Friday and Saturday night where this is empty. So, you know, we're, we're busy, they're, they're not, and whatever, but it wasn't a concern.
Now, if this application were to be approved, would you please generally describe the proposed business that you would put at this location?
It's a Little Caesar's carryout pizza, a franchise store. Uh, we do hot and ready pizzas, so our, the hot and ready promises, uh, to be given a perfect pizza with a smile in thirty seconds or less. So, they're literally coming in, our goal is to give them a pizza in thirty seconds. So, we are, it's a, you know, we, we make our dough from scratch, everything is cooked with projections to be projecting how many people are really coming in, and ninety percent of our businesses are hot and ready, just pepperoni and cheese pizzas. The other ten percent are in a special food, like supreme, three meat, things like that.
A minimal part of your business has to do with phone calls for pizzas?
It's, it's hot and ready, so once people know what it is, they, they don't call them, they, they know that it is coming, so they get it.
Can you estimate the number of employees you may have at this location?
Fifteen.
And what would the maximum number of employees be at any one time?
Uh, six on a Friday night.
And will you have any deliveries?
No, we don't deliver.
And can you project how you would arrange for your employees to park at the site?
There, uh, if you look at the, I don't know if you have the site plan, but on the far side, the far left or the far right, there are food bases, or with dumpy balances, uh, towards the end where that's where we'd have them parked. Um, that's the people that would, with the cars, but, uh, a lot of our employees don't drive, they're locally come within the area, um, stewardesses, and so that's where they will work.
You indicated that Friday and Saturday night are your busiest time. Have you done a projection of what you might expect as the number of customers per week?
Per week is about fifteen hundred customers altogether. Um, per hour on a Friday night, the Friday, say, from six to seven, if you, if probably your busiest hour, we'd have about thirty customers.
And what do you project as the hours of operation of your business?
Um, eleven AM to eleven PM.
And what would you think the average time is that a customer is in your store ordering their pizza and being served?
Our goal is thirty seconds, it happens, sometimes it goes to two minutes.
And what will be on your menu?
Uh, pepperoni or cheese or pizzas are the main menu item, toppings if they want to special order a pizza, uh, wings, breadsticks, cheesy breadsticks.
And how will your garbage be disposed of?
Uh, we would have a contact with Ace, uh, Ace Manager, Ace Waste, uh, or Leola Flanders, and it's, it's good dumps from the back.
And what kind of signage are you seeking to put up?
We would put a LED sign, um, channel eleven to the front, standard Little Caesar's sign.
I have no further questions, this is witness.
The comments, uh, I believe from, uh, our office, Mr. Di Lorenzo, uh, said that the plan does not show dumpster locations.
Uh, the dumps, if you look at the site plan, that the entire back has dumpsters for the various tents, there's no parking or anything there, so we would just find a, a spot there, um, you know, sort of right, right under there.
Um, there's a dumpster company that's used right now back there, is that the dumpster company that would be used?
No, I have a relationship with, uh, with Ace.
So, it's a different dumpster company?
If, if, it just depends on, if, if Ace doesn't service this area, it could, some dumpster companies, some waste companies are more, you know, predominant in certain areas.
But would it be the dumpster company that you're always using now?
Yeah.
That's a good term, because I visited the site, you know, and this particular dumpster company, just for the board or anyone to see, um, I don't, if you've been there today at your business in the back.
Mm-hmm. I don't have a business there yet.
Oh, but if you went to the back of the site, this-
I wouldn't have a dumpster like that, it's, it's, it's awful, but we have food, and we have twice a week pick up, and it's, uh, and that's why I stick with Ace, that's why I said I want to use Ace.
Okay, because I have a major concern, it's right in, it's, I'm not saying it's your business, I, because I knew, I, I was there, I know that everything is still sealed and locked up, but I noticed this dumpster.
Is that, is that in front of a food establishment?
It's right next to, it's in your, uh, the back of your establishment, uh, whatever, it's right between your door and the other door, um, it's, it's there.
It's a big dump, it's maybe?
No, it didn't look like food.
Okay.
Uh, but it was overflowing, it looked like it had been there, uh, for a significant amount of time, and I was concerned if this-
Yeah.
This is the company that you would be using, um, or there's an issue that needs to be taken up with mall management, because this is, this is a definite-
So, we, I, I have, I, I use Ace at our other locations, and we have a really good relationship with them, and, and they pick up promptly, and that's why I wanted, I want to keep going with it.
When I take a look at, when I take a look at the exterior map site, and then I take a look at the interior plan here, this part matches your exterior site. I don't understand what this is on the side.
Um, can I see?
Sure.
So, now, okay, yeah, um, next to us is, uh, there's a, the tenant that's here, their space ends, it's just the way that the space is demised, that the landlord's done it, we have extra space over here. They have, their space, I guess, comes around that way.
Okay, but it just shows on the plan itself that I'm just seeing a long rectangular shape, I'm not seeing that piece indicating that it's part of your business site.
These are things on, on the regular plans that were-
Oh, the site, that's the, uh, the site plan.
Site plan.
Yeah, that's, this is the part that they've given us.
Okay, and what would, I, since I see, um, what possibly, I, I'd like to know, what is this for?
It's a walking cooler.
A walking cooler?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, where, since this was a check cashing business prior to this, and I know that there's a Blimby's next door, um, where, where will grease traps be, for instance, for, that's concerning that-
Um, the three compartments sink is back here, and there's a standard under the counter grease trap, where if you see, um, where it's a square with a circle inside, right at the bottom side.
Arlene, Arlene, that's him, when he comes in with us, we have to do that, that's a, when in-
Okay, because I know that once we had something on Franklin Avenue, where we had a concern about, remember the other Franklin Avenue, where there was a concern about block grease trap, and I wanted to make sure that they took into account grease traps, so that we didn't do backup that affected the other businesses.
They got to abide by code, they got to be to the bare minimum, we can't put any more on here at this level.
But just to ask your, for your question, it's, it's under the sink, it's, we, we, it's dug into the, into the ground.
I'm, uh, looking at the letter from Mr. Di Lorenzo, and it says, "The applicant shall provide the board proposed hours of operation." And the front of our notice, it says ten to ten, now you just state eleven to eleven?
Um, ten o'clock is when they come in, um, to, they come in to prepare, but it's not open for the public, uh, that's when the employees come in, and we close at ten, but I said eleven because we, that's when they leave, and we have winter hours and summer hours, so in the summer we stay till eleven, in the winter we stay till ten. And, you know, it's, I have, I run a few of the, of the other ones, it just depends on what the traffic is like, if the layers will stay till eleven, if not, it's really closed at ten.
But you'll definitely be closed by eleven?
Yeah.
Uh, you also state that you have ten employees on this application, but tonight you testify is fifteen?
I, I haven't looked at the application in a, in a while, but, uh, we usually do between ten and fifteen, depending on the course.
But again, the maximum at any more than time is six.
You guys playing, installing the security cameras?
Yes.
We set that as a condition.
Yeah, sure, we can, we're, we're going to list that as, as a condition.
By outdoor or indoor?
We like that both, I mean, you know, camera facing outside.
We put one up back, outside the back.
Right.
And, um, we play right in the front lobby, and then we put a few inside, there are eight cameras, and so, uh, we don't put them outside the front door, because that's, uh, in the parking lot, and that's, we, we do outside that.
Can we limit it to exterior, uh, rear exterior as opposed to interior and rear outside as opposed to outside in the front?
Uh, I don't know, I just watched the news in the morning, and it seems like they're catching all these people on people's security cameras, and I just think it would be good if you could just point one out the front?
The way, the way the, it's, the structure of the building, it, there's a roof that goes sort of out in the box, that would be able to do that.
It's just a matter of how well, is that general, but isn't that the mall's responsibility for one?
It might be a matter of, yeah, for lighting, it's just, you know, it just seems like
the more cameras you have, they always pick up and find people on someone else's, you know, homeowners, I, recently, I saw two people had their dog stolen out of their front yards, and they caught them on, on the security camera, it's just, you know, it's a good thing to have, so if, you know, if we can have one face it toward, you know, if it's feasible, I'd like to see it.
If it's feasible?
Yeah.
The, the back and, the back is guaranteed.
Okay.
I just have a question, um, so you said it's ta, it's carryout, so you won't have tables or chairs or countertops or?
No, the three, the three chairs you see in the front are just-
For waiting to pick up. So, you won't have a place so if someone gets it there, they can't see it, or?
All Little Caesar's like this, just carry?
Yeah, no delivery, hot and ready.
Jerry?
Um, I do have some concerns with parking. Um, on the left, a small parking lot next to-
And so, Walsh, if I could, my next witness would be more well-versed to discuss parking exactly in traffic expert, if that's okay with you.
Okay, and this is strictly, um, takeout, so we can make a condition that Little Caesar's does decide to go with delivery, don't come back?
Is that, that's a, no problem, my client indicates.
Any, uh, anybody on the board have any further questions? Anybody in the public have a question in this witness?
I have a question, you said you, you can't put a camera in front of the store?
No, I said it, it just depends on if we can or not, if we can, we will, but, uh, the store isn't, it's not straight up, there's sort of a canopy outside, and the-
Can it be put under the canopy? Because the reason I'm saying this is, and I agree with the chairman, is because there was a robbery there recently at that mall, where, uh, I believe they ran to Newark after, after Belleville responded, if you remember.
Yes.
Yes.
Something like that, but the thing is, you're talking about a business that there
may be a lot of cash, and it would be open for a robbery, so therefore, if you get them on camera, and if they're digital, they're even better, because on the zoning board, we just approved something that had to have digital cameras, because those cameras, you could zoom up on a license plate and somebody's face, and I think that would be safe for your business also.
If, if you want, if you want to put camera in front of it, that's not, it's just one of those.
Yeah.
I'll make it a condition. Mine, I just might add, it's not directly, but it, when we had the gym open, there was a concern about that alley and the fence, so the fence is there. Uh, I drove in the back, there really aren't any cars parked in the back, the fence was wide open, and considering where this gentleman's business is going to be, that alley needs to be, that fence needs to be maintained and locked in the back. I don't know, again, it's, Mr. Cassillon, it's-
The manager of the, uh, shopping center said he would, indicated he was trying to be here, but obviously he is not here, so we can ask, we don't control that.
Mr. Di Lorenzo, is that something maybe you could address?
Yeah, as long as there was a condition job, we could, yeah, if it's a condition, we can address it.
It's as far, it's, I know it's not, it's the mall owner.
Yeah.
But we broke that up last time, he said that he would have it really basically secured, and he made some comment about they would close it at night. Well, I went back there today, there aren't any cars there that anyone needs to get through that, that fencing area at night, you've got Route twenty-one running through the back, it needs to be secured for this gentleman's business and for anyone.
All listed as a condition.
Secured, yes. Plus. All the time, or just in the evening?
Well, it's supposed to be closed all the time, if I remember, four, four years ago, from years and years ago, it was a condition to close that off. Frankie can call.
I'll call, I'll dial tomorrow, manager.
Anybody else have questions in this witness? No?
Say.
Thank you.
The story about truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, now, be honest.
Yes, I do.
State your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Joseph Steiger, S T A I G A R, and it's two four five Main Street, Chestnut, New Jersey.
Mr. Steiger, what's your occupation?
I'm a professional engineer, licensed in the state of New Jersey, as well as other states in the northeast, professional planner, also licensed in the state of New Jersey. Uh, I practice as a traffic engineer, although I've, I've also testified for this board, uh, not only in that capacity, but as a site engineer and as a professional planner as well, throughout, um, I'd say throughout the state of New Jersey, but mostly in this northeast, uh, area.
And what school did you graduate from?
Bachelor of Science, a Master of Science degrees in civil engineering from the Jersey Institute of Technology, which I'm also a major professor at.
Are you a member of many societies, professional groups connected with your work?
Institute of Transportation Engineer.
Well, except you.
We're, we're accepting him as an expert in the field of engineering and planning, if that's okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you, um, describe the existing site?
Yes, it's a shopping center, it's an elongated property, um, and, and parking is, um, kind of oriented to the north side of the site as opposed to the south side of the site. There's fifty-seven parking spaces on the south side, you have the traffic signal lit up that allows for ingress and egress, to the south, the traffic sent, signal, there's fifty-seven parking spaces, um, so it's, it's good access, there's, um, un, un signaled access points, but also has a signalized access point in the center, so the traffic, it flow in and out works very well in terms of safety, uh, at this site. Parking is at a premium at times to the south side of the site where the proposed Little Caesar's is going to be located, uh, from my, uh, number of, uh, site visits to the site to identify the parking and traffic conditions in the area, it's generated primarily by the Planet Fitness, the, uh, the gym that's there, um, seems to be, uh, peaking at the times when gyms typically peak. Gyms, fitness centers peak early in the, early in the week, Mondays and Tuesdays are prime days or weekends over, and people are, for whatever reason, guilt or whatever, are back in the gym again, so Mondays and Tuesdays are, are really the, uh, peak time that a gym, uh, is, is active. And as the week goes by, we have that Monday and Tuesday, and as the week goes by, Wednesday is less, Thursday's even less, by the time you get to Friday night, it, gyms are pretty much at their absolute minimum. Saturdays, they're busy, but they're busy throughout the day, they're not that after-work time period, time slot, so they're not intensive uses either. So, it's pretty much a, a curve from Monday through Sunday, a downward curve in occupancy at the gym. The Little Caesar's is an inverse to that, and that's why I believe it's particularly suited for the site, because parking is at a premium, if you go there on, um, on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and even tonight, uh, it's busy because of the gym, and, uh, the Little Caesar's is the opposite, where Mondays is their slowest day, Tuesday, it's about the same also, and it's Friday and Saturday nights that is when everybody's out for a Little Caesar's pizza, so that's their busiest time period, so almost as an inverse to what the gym is doing. Uh, we've gone out there during the Friday and Saturday night periods, parking is open at that time, about half full, two-thirds full, in that order of magnitude, uh, but that's the time Little Caesar's going to be generating its peak activity. Uh, you heard the testimony, um, the peak hour intensity is thirty customers per hour period, um, the customers are in and out within a minute or two, because the, the food is ready, it's just a matter of watering it, paying for it, putting it in a box, and walking out the door, so the turnover is very fast. Uh, so in terms of parking and traffic generation, thirty per hour is not a, um, a heavy volume that's going to cause any traffic issues or traffic congestion in the area, um, the use, this particular use is well-suited because it's the inverse of what the main trip generator and parking generator of the, of the site is, uh, and there's more than adequate parking for their peak demands on that Friday and Saturday night.
You mentioned thirty per hour, that's only one hour, is that not the prime time on Friday nights?
That's the peak hour, yes, all other hours are obviously less than that.
And would you describe your findings and conclusions and mention whether or not this complies with the conditions that are required?
Yes, and, and I said, um, I believe from the tra, this from traffic and parking point of view, this, this use is nice and suited for the site. Uh, your ordinance, township ordinance, uh, has general standards for all conditional uses, of which this is, um, and I'll go through them, there's, there's five of them. Uh, the first one, that it will not be detrimental to health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community, uh, this is a food establishment that's going to be, uh, not generating any detriment, uh, to those aspects. Second, the proposed use shall not create a fire, traffic, environmental, or safety hazard, which, again, which I think the key issue there is, um, is traffic, and, and as I, my testimony bore out, is that it would not be a hazard, all other aspects, environmental, safety, uh, fire, will all be in accordance with your township code requirements. Uh, the third one, not adversely affect the neighborhood, and again, I don't believe that this use, uh, this use fits into a parking, uh, into a, uh, shopping center and not have any adverse effect. Pro, proposed use shall provide safe and efficient vehicular pedestrian circulation with access and egress designed to eliminate any traffic safety hazards, and so designed as not to create any traffic congestion on the budding streets, and I believe my previous testimony, um, as well as the applicant's testimony, or bears that out, that there will be not any, uh, congestion caused. And lastly, proposed uses or structures shall meet the bulk requirements, all street parking, loading requirements I set forth in this chapter, unless otherwise, knowing any conditional use standards, and again, I believe we, we comply with that, uh, that point also.
And did you have an opportunity to review Mrs. Di Lorenzo's letter?
Yes, I did.
And do you have any comments with regard to that letter?
No, I believe, um, all the answers, well, both provided by the previous, um, by the previous, uh, witness. Number six, the board shall review- Uh, number six, the board shall review parking and lighting. Uh, lighting's not going to change. I think with the security cameras and the proper lighting, it'll, it'll act as a safe, uh, safe site.
And did you have an opportunity to review Mr. Harris's letter?
Yes, I did. Uh, and again, um, I'll leave it to Tom if I'm missing anything, but, um, I believe that we, uh, we comply with, uh, all the requirements and, and comments of Mr. Harris's as well.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
I mean?
Where will the delivery trucks, uh, come in?
You know, I'll, I'll ask the applicant. I would, I would think they probably come in the back as well. Uh, last thing, uh, that the applicant wants to do is disrupt his business or his neighbor's business, if they want them complaining. So deliveries will be non, non-peak hours. Um, and it could come in the back, or they could come in the front.
And Tom? They come, uh, our, our deliveries are overnight. They all come, they usually come between twelve minutes and six a.m. And, uh, they come into the back.
What's the size of the trucks?
It's a trailer.
So are you go, are you gonna come in from the food basics side? If I'm looking at the site? Uh, because where the Dunkin' Donuts is? It's tight. Uh, just, where that Dunkin' Donuts is off to the side, a, a trailer coming in, where the curb cuts are, we're all familiar with that? We have to come?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with, uh, how, how they do it, but I know that they, what they do is they come in between twelve minutes and six a.m. When there's nobody really in the parking lot.
I'm not concerned about where the cars are, I'm concerned about where the cut can come in on a certain angle, I guess they have to come in through the food basics side.
I, I don't know if you heard the witness, she said they come in when, in the, uh, early morning hour before anybody's there.
I understand that.
I'm sorry.
It would be that particular lot where the Dunkin' Donut side is, you're familiar with this mall. If you're familiar with the curb cuts, it's not even whether cars are there or not, anyone who knows that area, you couldn't take, you could take a box truck, but you couldn't get a, a tractor, trailer in one movement into it, even on a loop around. You just have to, I'm just thinking you'd have to come in, you'd have to come in on the other side.
We, we had taken a look at that and, um, at the Dunkin' Donuts side, there is a curb cut and its dimension is thirty feet wide. Um, that tractor trailer, if it was coming in, probably, it would come in as a right turn, uh, going northbound on Main Street. And then the thirty feet, it would take up a whole thirty feet. You know, uh, so that's why it's going to be when the, uh, other, uh, facilities are all, all closed. And then it can park, you know, in, in the, in the area, uh, in front of the store.
Or, all right, and then it would be at night, after midnight, there would be a delivery through the front rather than the back?
I think it would have to be, but I doubt that the tractor trailer could get in the back and sort of take a look. And, and it might, it might be able to squeeze by circulating around, but I know this was the southernly driveway is signed no exit. Uh, if it was to do that, circulate in a clo- counterclockwise, direct clockwise direction, it could go out that most southernly driveway, make a, make, probably make a left turn or a right turn. Uh, but my, my suggestion would be probably sit in the parking lot, which is not being used at late at night, and deliver from there. But I think the key is, this was got, if that was going to happen during the day when the stores, other stores are open, it'd be a disaster. But the fact that it'll be at that overnight time period when the place will be empty, it'll work out.
Back to, um, parking. The spot next to Dunkin' Donuts, if you ever go there, that's completely full for people going to Dunkin' Donuts, so I'm not really sure.
But, but mostly in the morning that I saw, in the evening hours, it's fairly open. I just went there before the, uh, the, uh, the time tonight, there was four parking spaces open. It gets, it does get a little crowded, but it's not, I haven't seen it full. I, those thirteen spaces, I've never seen full at any one time.
Well, I was there Monday about eleven thirty in the morning. They were fill, full. Most of the parking spaces across from the store were full. There was a car parked in the, um, that trap is always with the hash mark, and there were five cars along the front in the fire, uh, right away, no parking area.
Yeah. I've seen, I've seen double parking happen as well, you know, occasion.
And now you're adding six cars for employees plus thirty additional, uh, cars during peak hours?
Well, thirty wouldn't be at the same time. Your thirty, he, what the witness testified to was that he tries to get the customers out in thirty seconds to two minutes. So you would only have a few cars at any one time.
I know, but you already have cars illegally parking to get, um, food from the Chinese restaurant with peas and Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, we have two options. We have either keep the store vacant and board it up.
No, no.
Or have a use. And I think what my, my point, no, my point is, out of most other uses, this is probably the best suited because of that situation where parking is a premium many times throughout the day. This is not one that creates.
I am not arguing with you. I'm glad, uh, we're getting, uh, that space used, I'm glad, you know, it's coming in. I just have an overall concern, concern with limited parking in that area.
And that was one thing that the applicant took a, a look at. He had the same concerns as you had, but then he knew that the parking that's being generated is ori- oriented by the, um, by the fitness center. And his peak times are not coincidental with the peak times of the fitness center. There, that fitness center is on, happens on a Monday and Tuesday nights or after work. Um, they're busier in the, um, in the winter time when, when the, um, Little Caesar's is not as busy. Their busy time, season is summertime. So there's a lot of not coincidental time periods that the peak of that fitness center occurs, when peak does not occur, and vice versa. So if any use was going to be go into the store, this is probably one of the best that you could hope for, given that parking congestion situation that you've seen.
Now, are these deliveries daily?
No, they're once a week. And we only have, we have one vendor, um, that does that. We, we actually have two vendors. We have a, our basic, uh, one vendor supplies everything but Pepsi. Pepsi comes in, um, on their smaller Pepsi trucks and they deliver once a week as well. So it's Blue Line Food Service who does our regular delivery, Pepsi does our service.
In that Pepsi truck, that definitely could use the rear, um, delivery area.
Okay, because Planet Fitness is open, uh, twenty-four seven. I don't know what the, um, what their, um, their usage is between, uh, twelve and six in the morning.
I ain't gonna say.
I've driven through here late at night, you don't see many people there at all, it's like a ghost town.
You know, I just said, you know, parking's a concern, especially on that, you know, south side where, you know, it narrows and there's not that much parking. No matter what goes there, Mr. Walsh, parking would be a concern.
I just have, I have a question. You said that you get two different deliveries, you get one from your vendor, one from Pepsi. Why do Pepsi make, do they make their deliveries during the day or?
They, they, they do during the day.
In the morning or?
Uh, it just depends on their schedule.
How it is. And you get that direct from Pepsi or through a third-party vendor?
Through Pepsi and Carney.
Okay. But you have no control over the time that delivery?
But it's a small truck, it's not big.
Yeah.
The Carney warehouse doesn't have big, huge trucks there, because they're used to, you know, delivering in Harris and Carney, the more denser areas. So they have the smaller trucks.
Anybody else on the board have a question in this witness? Not, does anybody in the public have a question?
I have, uh, two questions. First question is, um, is there any sale that goes on Monday to Thursdays like Domino's does, uh, to increase business?
You have to ask the owner that quick.
Well, I can ask him that.
Okay. You have a question on behalf of the, of the plan, that's all, huh?
We have a, not, uh, we have the same nationwide promotion for the past four years, which is the five dollar large pizza, all day, every day, any good.
So all the week, the whole week?
The whole week.
So it's nothing special from Monday to, from Thursday?
And we can't, I mean, how much is a, than a five dollar pizza?
Is there anything else you provide besides pizza?
Just pizza and wings.
Just pizza. Now, the question I have of.
Pizza and wings, just pizza and wings, he says.
That's my little principle here. Um, the question I have of the planner is, the estimate that you made, that it is highly used on Friday and Saturday, and the highest hour on Friday would be thirty-five customers.
Thirty.
Thirty customers. Where are you getting that from, since there's no pizzeria there right now?
From the applicant, that, that.
So you have done no survey at one of, at another location to determine that?
No.
So it's hypothetical?
No, it's from information I've gotten from the applicant.
My point, you are getting it from the applicant, where is the study done that tells you this? It's a hypothetical, just based on?
It comes from his estimate based on the history of the other facilities that he owns. It's not, there's no way.
This is based on another facility, but you had done no study at any other facility?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all.
Uh, if nobody else in the public has a question, we'll close the public portion.
I just, when you're done, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like a brief moment to sum up this one.
Does anybody else have any further questions? Not Mr. Gashion?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of board, we're seeking site plan and conditional use approval. Obviously, this is a permitted use in a shopping center that's been there almost as long as I can remember. That means it's been there a long time. Uh, it's an existing vacant store. We're not adding to the store, there's no new construction, there's no expansion. As I recall, not that long ago, the shopping center was suffering with lack of tenants. Now, things are good again. That's the last thing we want, is for this to fall without tenants and then start to fall into disrepair. The conditions have been met as testified to by my planner. The parking situation, it dovetails perfectly. My client's busiest time is Friday night and Saturday night. Most of his business is at night. Those nights are the most particularly busy. Obviously, people are at the gym working out on Friday and Saturday night, but not the same number. As was testified to, obviously, earlier in the week, there are more people at the gym working out. As to the security cameras, my client indicated he'd be willing to do them, he planned to do them, except for the one in the front. If the board makes the one in the front a condition, he will obviously accept that. But the thing I want to point out, again, repeating what I said, I think it's wonderful to have another new business going into that shopping center. So I thank the board for its time and consideration. I understand there are a lot of good questions that were asked. Hopefully, we've provided the answers to you. Thank you again.
I make a condition, I make it, I make a motion to approve what the conditions recommended by the board.
Do you want to list them, probably three of them?
Sure. Security cameras is one. Eight cameras total, both in the interior and rear, and at least one minimum at the front.
Right.
It's going to be takeout only. I don't, you got, if you had stated that was a condition.
That was testified to, you can make a condition also, but that's part of the record.
I don't think we need that to make a condition.
Okay. And then, um.
The condition that's recommended is that if Caesar's on a corporate level decides to build pickup or delivery, they'll come back.
Okay. And then the fence issue, that it shall be secured, locked at all times.
Can we make that? Um, we will attempt to have that done because we can't control what the shopping center owner does. We certainly will contact.
Mr. DiLorenzo had a contact.
Mr. DiLorenzo probably had more information on that one.
By the time he came in front of the board, so.
All right, yeah, we won't, we won't list that as a condition.
I don't think it'll be a problem.
Mr. DiLorenzo will look into it.
Yes.
Cause that gate was open on Monday when I was there, so.
Those are the conditions.
Any hours of operation, it's eleven to eleven?
The operations, ten to ten, but they will be there from eleven.
He, he, there are summer hours where he'd like to be open till eleven, depending upon the business. He may determine there's not enough business to do that, but he would prefer to have the opportunity to stay open till eleven.
And about the deliveries, at the back, you have, it's the only night he said, if you want to make any conditions?
The tractor, the trailer, the big trailer, it's dirt, it has to be at night.
Yeah, he said it has to be, if you want to make any conditions.
The major, the major trailer, the box truck for the soda in the back, I don't think is an issue because that would come in through the back, but the big trailer has to be at night.
And any conditions of Mr. Harris and Mr. DiLorenzo's reports, right? Is that everything?
Yeah, that's it.
Someone like to second the motion? Lewis, could you call the rule?
Mr. Benira.
Yes.
Mr. Zungri.
Yes.
Mrs. Inogorada.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shore.
Yes.
Mr. Covella.
Yes.
Mr. Anelma.
Yes.
Thank you for your time and consideration again.
Someone like to make a motion adjourned meeting? Second? Meeting is adjourned.